We are starting the February third. Bakersfield Planning Commission meeting and it is seven oh six. I'll take minutes, given that our secretary is out of the office and I've done it in the past and feel confident in my capacity to do so. And we are open. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Well, uh, it looks like.
That's Luke. Hey, how you doing? Do you know of how Emily's doing? Is she, you know, I just, the weather's kind of rough.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So have a seat anywhere you'd like. We're just starting with the agenda.
To be added to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
And.
Maybe this is an adjustment.
What is your?
Uh, so it brought my attention that Brian was asking the board members to review a plan for, um, Granger Heinlein tonight. In addition to that, I'd like you guys to take a look at a plan for Bill Richards as well. Um, I understand it's not a one hearing or anything like that. I'm hoping you could get that scheduled for later this month or really next month. Um, and if Gabe Jarvis doesn't show up, I will answer questions about his plan as well.
Okay, so.
I'm here for three minutes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Alright, so give me one at a time so that we can put them into the agenda.
So the Granger fixed area allocation subdivision you should be aware of and plans to review.
I've not heard.
I have not, I have not seen that.
So that's a fixed area allocation?
Yeah, that was just standing for discussion with Brian.
He might have submitted it, but we haven't maybe seen it. We haven't met since last month, so. Okay.
And then. That there's subdivision for Mr. Richards. I don't want you to do that. Can I just take a quick look at it?
Minor.
Uh, young minor, uh, two, a three lot subdivision on Paradise Lane.
Yeah, three lots of major.
Is that William Richards?
I'm sorry.
Is that William Richards?
Yes, Bill Richard.
And what?
Creating two lots.
I'm creating two lots.
Yeah, I don't know why I said three. It's because three is usually. A single lot being divided into two. I'm not allowed to answer that.
And what's the third one?
Third one is, it's not really my project, um, but there's something going on with Sugar Bush for Jarvis Stanley property. They're subdividing the, the Sugar Bush off from the farm. So I have plans here to look at if you guys have questions, because I don't know if Gabe's coming tonight.
What's your name?
My name's Christian Dublowski.
Alright, you've been here before, right?
How do you spell your last name?
I think it would be easier if I just gave you the card.
Speaker on at the table. It's hard to hear anybody that's speaking in the audience.
Oh, yeah, he, uh, he.
I speak louder.
We're just adding it to the agenda right now.
Okay. Yeah.
So we were just taking adjustments to the agenda and there's three items that have been added. And I think that they could go together. And just for you Heather to hear, they are the Granger Heinlein fixed area allocation. Richards and Richards subdivision on Paradise Lane and Jarvis Sugar Bush. What is that again?
What is it? It's a subdivision.
He's dividing it off or?
Separating the farm from the Sugar Bush.
Thank you.
And then, do you want to be added to the agenda? Would you like to be added to the agenda also? Okay, she's already on there, so.
Oh, okay. And then there's a agenda item six, the ZBA appointment. Can that's, is that your?
You, you initially. Heather, you at some point requested the ZBA appointment be put on the planning commission agenda. I don't know if that's something you still want there.
You're muted.
Um, so with Emily there tonight, um, would be a good time to talk about that because as far as I'm understanding, what I was told by the lawyer is that if we got rid of the ZBA and just did a development review board, all of the hearings would go to the development review board and the planning commission would just remain to make, do bylaws and, and things like that. So the planning commission would switch to meeting maybe once or twice out of the five years. And then the DRB would be meeting monthly like we do for the planning commission, but it would basically give, and we were hoping to see if everybody from the current planning commission would just be on the DRB board and the planning commission. So we would become a dual role. So we, people who are on the planning commission now would be on the DRB. And that it would combine the roles because it was very hard, this last hearing, um, to ve- very hard to interpret some of the, the laws and regulations that, or bylaws that we had created on the planning commission. And after speaking with the select board, you know, everybody agreed that it would make more sense to just kind of combined. You know, have planning commission and then the DRB and anything that had to go for a hearing would go to the DRB.
Okay, so we'll talk more about that. Um, let's try to get through everything else. I would suggest that maybe we move the three, the Granger Highland, Richards and Jarvis issues to right after the ZBA appointment. I hate to move them to the end, but um, these are, these are surprise. And frankly, we've got other people that are planned for, that we should give them.
I almost think that all we need to do is set a hearing for those three.
I don't know if that's adequate. Is that all you're talking about?
It's my understanding that the board members were anticipating I'm talking about it today. That's why I was.
I was just gonna do a run a quick thing. So I was thinking we could warn it as a primary slash final hearing. That way if we could, like the eye gland probably would only take one. There's no septic, there's no.
So there's, there's three different topics he's talking about there. I'm trying to put them into the agenda. And I was thinking that frankly, this is a surprise. I don't care what you thought. This is the first. I think the three of us have heard about it.
Yeah.
So we're thinking. That's okay. So I'm thinking it would be better for us to conduct the business that we knew of. And then you could be the new number seven. Okay? Does that sound okay to everybody?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I feel like the others have already made clear arrangements with us. And so we're gonna call those the Jablonsky issues. Um, well, that's what they are. They're issues before the board. And then a public comment will be nine or eight rather, and review of the minutes will be nine. Next meeting is ten. And adjournment will be eleven. Does that seem reasonable?
I'm fine.
Okay. Um, so we should introduce ourselves since there are some people that are new to us. Why don't you start?
Yeah, I'm Ken Carter.
Bill Irwin.
Tammy Brennan.
Alright, and, um, yes, I'm sorry, Heather. If you're there, you can unmute and introduce yourself. If not, Heather Jewett is a fourth member. There we go.
Yes, I'm here. Sorry, I just had to get my earbuds in. Um, Heather Jewett, planning commission.
Very good, thank you. And we have a fifth member who's absent tonight, so we have a quorum four out of five. And, um, the first thing we wanted to hear was about the historic district and Pat was supposed to, to provide something on that. Are you able to provide something in his place, Alice? Great, why don't you come up here to this chairs facing us and turn on the little microphone button. It's the big button says push. And that. Pardon me? Thank you. He's from Northwest Regional Planning Commission.
That's sort of why we're here.
Okay, well, we'll see.
He's helping us with.
Oh, good.
The light is on.
Right, yeah. Sister Jablonsky already put it on.
Conservation.
Great.
We are, we have this young man helping us look for some grant funds and other funds. And, um, he suggested that we find out what the situation is with the, um, village center. And I looked at the plan that was established in two thousand eighteen, I think it said, that's the last time it was done. Anyway.
You are correct.
This is from, and, um, it, it doesn't designate anything to store in the village center. Uh, at that time. Uh, I believe it did restore, I don't know that for sure. But we would like when you get to that step in considering the plan that we be in on some suggestions or thoughts or whatever. It hopefully won't be for a long time. Am I correct?
No, you're not correct. We are going to undertake a revision of the town plan this year.
Yes. I didn't mean it like ten years or something. Not, anyway.
It's okay.
Um. So, um, I, I don't know exactly. I don't have questions, but I just wanted you to know that we were concerned about what the specifics were in regard to the historic district. And, um, many of the acquisitions for grants, we are asked to designate say yes or no that we are or aren't. And we don't know what to answer.
Hmm, yeah.
I, I, do, do you have any experience or knowledge from other towns about what they call a historic district or maybe Luke does? And then Luke, maybe you should come up.
Yeah.
And introduce yourself.
Uh, hi, I'm Luke Slamba, regional planner at the Northwest Regional Planning Commission. Um, yeah, so you can find maps of state designated historic districts. Um, I think they're in a lot of towns in Franklin County and I think, uh, Bakersfield probably has one on the map, um, so. That's something that can be included in town plans and, and provide that information, uh, to you here at the application, so.
That would be different than the village center potentially or?
Yeah, um.
Because we do have that.
Village center is something, something separate, um, for state through ACCD. The historic district is through the, uh, Department of Historic Preservation, I think. Um, and they sort of, they're sort of separate, uh, designation.
Okay.
Do you know what like the restrictions are in a historic district that are?
Um, I don't think there's any, there's no restrictions on what people can do like with their property. Um, if you're applying for state funds to do improvements in historic districts, usually there's some standards you have to follow uh, when you're doing that, uh, to follow the historic preservation guidelines, but.
Yeah, I've still, I'm not aware of a historic district, to be honest with you. I know we have a variety of current land uses on our map on page eighty-three. And you can see page eighty-three.
Anything that was under, when she was talking about, um, Brigham Academy.
Right.
That is.
Yeah.
The village center on page eighty-seven.
Yeah, so, um, the, the village center is a different um, class designation from historic in that it gives some tax credits for certain kinds of development. I would think, not that I really know, I'm just guessing though, that a historic district is really for protection of certain properties and certain elements of the community's culture. And I really like the idea. So we have this map that describes the village district, high density residential, low density, density residential, conservation, rural. And then some kind of very unique places, hair and protection, aquifer, watershed, flood. But it's those first five, village, high density, low density residential, conservation and rural. That's kind of the big ways that we designate property and so I, I think when we revise the town plan, which we will start to do in the coming months, in the coming meetings, which are just once a month, you know, we might meet more often because it's a big town revision, town plan revision, that, um, you should try to help us understand the things that are historic that would be included in a district. Just as somebody who's been in town here, you know, the town hall, the church, the historic the, the historic society and then the commons, the cemetery, the buildings that are along the cemetery. Yes, the Hearst House and the Carriage Barn and those sorts of things. Yeah. And that, that might be the trickiest of them all because of the possibility that it might be under some sort of, um, negotiation for purchase and development. But I think we could certainly add some things to our goals. The way town plans are written is you, you, you try to establish goals and you, you create laws or regulations better in the zo- in the zoning bylaws. And, um, those kind of encourage development according to the plan. So I, I, I think it's great and I appreciate your folks' efforts in this. And Luke, if, am I correct, are you kind of advising them?
Uh, yeah, so I'm helping advise on potential sorts of grant funding for the Carriage Barn, um, renovations. Um, so there's a structural study that was done a few years ago, um, so just looking for funds to get the building stable again. Um, yeah, I will add that usually town plans are like a historic, um, resources chapter and usually we go through the town plan section by section, section when we update it, so. I think that'd be a good opportunity if the conservation commission wanted to come to one of these meetings, um, when we're focusing on that chapter. Um, that could be a good point of discussion. And then we could identify what the historic resources are in the town and make sure that that's written into the plan.
Yeah.
And then if there is a historic district already, we can include an audit doc or if there's not, we could sort of map out where the historic properties were for, uh, to identify.
Yeah, because I, I, I'll be honest, I have one of the first houses in town. And there are a few near me that are among the first houses in town. And it seems like those would be interesting to identify at the least.
Yeah.
But maybe preserve too, or at least recognize them.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that can be a good, like, first step.
Yeah. Right, right.
Lots of details Scotty Dunn's.
Hmm.
Very good back. The whole town.
Oh.
Very fortunate. It was a UVM student.
Wow. Is, is that something that you could share with us?
Where is that? Where is that report? Yeah.
Well, isn't that the one where it had pictures of all the houses and?
Yes. Um, there were only two copies originally. One went to this library at UVM, I, I believe, and the other one stayed here in town.
Hmm.
And, um, but it is, as I said, on the internet and can be accessed at any time by anybody.
When you say on the internet, is that with the historic society at Bakersfield or?
The store, I can't tell you. My software tonight.
Amy's got it. Amy, Sammy's got it.
Thank you. Whoa.
Like the preservation cost of the lot or?
Yeah.
They have a library of things like.
Yeah, I know it's possible depending on, I don't know.
Something like you.
Well, this is fantastic. This is the kind of information that would help us to further your cause. So, um, if we could find a way to access the internet version, that would be good. Yeah. Great. And, um, do would it be possible for you to reach out to her to get the internet?
You email it to townabakersfield@gmail.com. I will get it.
And then give it to all of us and then we can look at it when we're revising the town plan. And then if you can get work from Northwest Regional Planning Commission on that grant, we're also going to be looking for a grant for revising the whole plan. And so Northwest Regional Planning Commission will be helping. What? Oh.
And this, uh, this thing opens up with the Bakersfield Village Historic District, so.
Interesting.
Presumably we have one.
It may be n- not an official land use district. It might be a place that's been described some way.
Yeah, and usually there's that very much.
But it would be really good to incorporate that language into the plan.
Yeah.
Because one of the things that is useful is you wouldn't want development in a historic district that would be detrimental to the historic nature. So for example, to put in some sort of, uh, antenna or power for um, wireless telecommunications or, uh, wind turbines or, um, anything like that, or even some sort of development, like the high density apartments might not be. So there'd be a lot of things to think about for that.
Yeah, this actually has, does have a boundary and everything, so.
Yeah, it seems like I've seen that and maybe it was incorporated into the village center as the.
I have this foggy memory of Nancy Hunt doing a lot of work, possibly to try to get some grant money for something back fifteen years ago or twelve years ago or.
I was thinking that she didn't complete it.
Maybe.
That, was it true that my, my idea was that she didn't complete it or do you think she did? On the first house?
No. Nan- did Nan- Nancy, uh, would Nancy, what, do you remember what Nancy was working on when she was, she was, she was trying to get the historic di- district maybe better defined or? I don't remember exactly the details, but I think it had something to do with Brigham maybe at the time and.
Yeah, I know at least I've seen a look for the barn that says, um, this structure could be a potential contributing resource to a historic district.
Hmm, that might have been it. National, yeah. Okay, well, thanks for bringing that to us and we'll, we'll give that more attention when we start doing the plan.
Yeah, and just if you don't mind, tell your folks at the historic commission to come to our meetings when we are revising the plan. Great. Yeah, because that, that's, that's, it's, it's helpful for people that have a particular interest to advocate for that interest during the town plan revision process. Well, we're always meeting, so help yourself to come by.
Thanks for coming.
Are you gonna stick around for Emily's?
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna do it.
Oh, she's not coming. I, I, I misread the email. I'm sorry. So we have completed that historic district.
Can I just interrupt for a second?
Yeah.
Just curious about Brian. You, are you here just to observe or do you have something you want? Do you want to be on the agenda? Okay.
Okay. So Luke, can you just help me with the spelling of your last name?
S L O M E.
I got it right. So in place of.
Yes, in place of.
Emily. And you're here to talk about mostly the municipal planning grant for our town revision, town plan revision.
Yeah, I was, yeah, primarily, yeah, that's why I'm here. Um, so yeah, basically the applications are due March thirty-first. Um, and so we are gonna be basically preparing the grant application for Bakersfield to update the town plan.
March thirty-first?
Yeah. Um, but as part of that process, Emily's gonna do a draft grant application, but, um, just so she can do that, um, we're thinking it would be helpful to have a conversation first so that we can sort of get some ideas to base the application on. Um, so that she can draft it, just to figure out like what the priorities are for the town plan update. And then there's also like some things to work and to be filled out that overall, um, for the planning commission and then we'll bring it to the select board meeting probably um, at the end of this month or early next month. Just to get everything in order for the grant, so. So I have a couple of copies of the program description for this year's municipal planning grant. Um, every year the state sort of has different priorities that they're looking to fund projects for. Um, so this year the major pri- priorities include projects related to climate resilience and flood recovery. Um, and projects that support communities for all ages and help implement, um, this, uh, state study called Age Stronger Mark, which is a roadmap for age from the state. Um, so, and then there's also priorities in there about strengthening village centers. Um, so I think those are a few that potentially would be good fits for the town's priorities and updating the town plan, but um, I guess like keeping those in mind and then also, um, any other thoughts that you have. I guess I just wanna identify if there's any major uh, like issues in the town plan. You think would be good to address in the town plan or sort of like focus areas for the town plan update?
So I think that we shared these with Emily two months ago, three months ago, maybe?
Yeah.
And I hope that she took some notes, so you might.
Yeah, I, well, yeah, I know, I think you discussed, uh, protection of scenic resources and maybe looking at, uh, ways to rethink how the zoning is done. I know that you have a fixed area allocation on the.
That was one that we've thought about, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so like at a town plan level, it'd sort of be like, what's the vision for that district and sort of achieving the balance, so.
And I think we should add this historic district.
Hmm.
Yeah, identification and protection. Um.
Are zoning maps a part of the plan or is it more part of the bylaws?
So in the plan, you do your future land use map, which is something that can feed into a zoning update later on. Um, so if you have any sort of long-term ideas of changes you'd like to make to your zoning.
Yeah, we, we do have some issues with the zoning map sort of crosses properties at times. Yeah, we, we do have some issues with the zoning map sort of crosses properties at times. They don't all follow actual property lines, so we kinda wanna tighten that up a little bit or.
Yeah.
Clean that up.
Good opportunity to like look at your zoning map.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've, we've, we've had some places where not only, as Ken said, we have like overlapping districts on a property, but also where we're not really sure where a district is and isn't relative to property lines because the districts are kind of like overlays and, um, then we also have some places where it's one district on one side of the road and it's a different district on the other side of the road. So maybe just, uh, review of those maps and the quality of that. Do you have a question, sir?
So I don't know if we see for somebody at that level, let's generate shape files of zoning areas. I know when I do some drafting, I find that helpful where it's hard to tell. Two files to land on property, especially where it can be confusing. Um, not to say that they're perfect cuz they're, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, they're not surveyed, yeah.
Just letting you guys know that data isn't.
Right. Yeah, it doesn't come up often, but when it does come up, it's kinda weird for us when we've got.
That has a zoning, um, you can click an overlay.
Hmm, okay, so you have access to these shape files that he's referring to.
Yeah, yeah, and those can be sort of overlaid with the parcel lines, but also generally when we do zoning updates, it's best practice to have who's on the districts follow the parcel boundary, so you don't have situations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know how that happened, but.
And then I think another thing we talked about was, um, protection of the drinking water aquifer specifically. There was a long time ago, uh, some interest to prevent let's call it industrial extraction for drinking water purposes because we feel it's a commodity that could be precious in the future. And we wanna make sure it's not taken advantage of between now and then. We're very lucky not to be like other parts of the country where they live and die by water, but who knows what the future holds.
Yeah, I know a lot of towns, well, a few towns in those areas do sort of like a source protection overlay that has some extra standards in the source protection area, so.
Yeah, we have that aquifer overlay district. And I think it's more that you can't do commercial extraction. That's probably what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Anywhere, any district, so. And then, um, the last thing is, is something that I actually thought you would have among your list of, um, you say climate resilience, flood recovery, age strong Vermont Village Center strengthening. And that was the, uh, improvements in availability of housing.
Yeah, there's definitely also a lot of priorities related to housing in the state priorities, so if that's something that is on.
Yeah, I think we'd wanna make sure that we, if much as possible, provide means by which people can have accessory dwelling units and have, um, maybe subdivisions in certain areas that would allow more density and whatnot. Yes, sir.
Does the town consider doing any sort of an initiative treatment facility in the Bakersfield Center?
You talk about water treatment? Waste water, oh.
Yeah.
So I think. I, I, I'm not sure if the town wants more development. I think they wanna make sure that there's house. Yes, the state does, but the cost of wastewater treatment on the taxpayers would probably be very significant and. No, I understand that, but I, I guess the point we're making, very few people in town have actually ever talked to us about wastewater. Most everybody's happy with Septic and. Well, the. Yeah, but at the same time, there are sewage treatment plants that fail. And then the whole town is out and has to replace it, so, you know. There's problems that are big and spread among many or small and you cover it yourself. And I think rural community like ours, we're kinda happy with a bedroom community. Yeah. Not sure, but where do you live?
Where do I live?
Yes. No, but it's, I think it's important to know that you're not a Bakersfield resident.
No.
So Bakersfield resident, and we'd like to make sure we hear from them about it too. Cuz I, I work in the city and I know they have totally different positions than those of us that live in the country. Any other? So you said you're going to fill out paperwork tonight?
Yeah, so there's, um, a resolution for the select board. They have to identify what's called a municipal authorizing official, who's gonna be the person like in the, uh, grant system who's like the municipal contact for applying for the grant. So, um, at the next select board meeting, we're sort of gonna have, give this, present this resolution to them and they're gonna identify that official and then sign this, um, and make it official, but um, before that can happen, the planning commission has to sort of just recommend applying for the municipal planning grant. So that's something you could do, um, tonight by sort of just doing a quick resolution if you're comfortable with that. Or, um, if you'd rather wait for Emily to put a draft together, um, you could, we, we, we are on sort of a short timeline, so you'd probably need to hold some sort of special meeting.
I think we've talked about this for most of the year.
Okay.
A few times.
Yeah.
And with Emily. And we also know that we have to revise it cuz we're at the date.
Yeah.
And we have historically been reliant on a grant to pay for the planner to do the work. So is there anyone willing to express a motion relative to applying for?
I mean, yeah, I move that we recommend the select board help us apply for a municipal, get, get permission to apply for the mun- municipal planning grant through the Northwest Regional Planning Commission.
All right.
Did I say that right or something like that?
Motion for the select board to assist planning commission with municipal planning grant for revision of town plan?
Yeah, or application for the grant or municipal planning grant application.
Okay, got it.
That's what you're looking for, right?
Yeah.
And so we have, uh, Ken, motion, Tammy, second. Is there any further discussion? Heather, you have any thoughts?
No, not on that subject, no.
Alright. Any other discussion? Alright, hearing none, all in favor of the motion to request the select board assist the planning commission with, uh, municipal planning grant application for revision of the town plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Heather drew it.
All opposed, say nay. Any extensions? I have a vote of four to zero approving.
And I just have this little.
Okay, you guys okay if I sign this?
Yep.
You gave me a pen. This must be the official pen. Lake, Lake Maury Resort. A nice place. And any other?
So I think Emily also had some questions about, um, what sort of outreach you guys would prefer to do for the plan. Sometimes sort of somewhere on a survey, um, and maybe like do some people handed events and other towns sort of focus on having, uh, one or two big like outreach events where they invite everyone, sort of have a bigger discussion. So, um, I guess just wondering if you have a preference for.
Those sound great. I, 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 I really feel like relying on the advertisement of this meeting on a monthly basis or maybe even some special meetings is inadequate. People don't notice, but if we would have a couple of special events where we were to take some ideas and maybe serve some snacks and, um, yeah, and have, have good advertising to generate some interest. That that, yeah, food is really critical, but, um, that, that would help us a lot because we tried just putting a lot of different notices out for all the meetings. We had extra meetings. We put it out on the various social media that exist and it was bleak.
Poorly attended, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I also have some copies of the draft budget, um, which I wanted to go over, but in the budget, there's sort of a public outreach.
Thanks.
Um, amount that's allocated for that, um, so that the, towards, you know, staffs are holding an event or we could also use NRPC uh, staff time sometimes.
And, you know, maybe we could all pitch in and bring some stuff too.
Yeah, and it could help advertise it too and sometimes we do like a direct.
Is, is there a maximum for the grant?
Um, so the maximum is somewhere in here. This, this is sort of like a template that we use for a lot of our, uh, you know, for a lot of our town plan.
Right.
Municipal planning grants, so this is sort of something that we've tested a lot of times and it's worked pretty well. Um, if you're, I, I'd say this is sort of like a high estimate, um, for doing like a really robust, you know, town plan update. Um, if it looks like too much and you sort of wanna revise, this could work a little bit, you could, um, look at maybe reducing some of these things, but this is sort of a plan that we use for town plan updates that's worked in the past.
So you said generally the kind of the grant requests seventeen thousand or whatever, it's twenty thousand or something in, in that range.
Yeah, yeah, this is pretty typical for like, uh, uh, municipal planning grant funded town plan update.
Yeah, cuz we have very small funds in our account because we don't really spend money. Other elements of the town spend more money routinely. So we would have to cover all of costs like these with the grant and we could likely meet the match, which I see there at the bottom.
Yeah.
We, we may have to actually ask for a little bit more for the budget for the next year. And, and I think maybe they were going to give us a little bit more for.
We're gonna be required and give some match, right?
Uh, yeah, so I think this has the required match.
It's ten percent.
Yeah. At the bottom.
Yeah.
So it'd be just under a few thousand dollars. Um, and the way it works is you get forty percent of the grant initially and then thirty percent halfway through and then the final thirty percent is reimbursed after.
Would we have to have that approved by the town? Because I think they've already closed off all that already. For this year.
Yeah, you happen to know Tammy what our budget, right, but do you know what our budget is? Five hundred?
Did they do five hundred or did they raise?
But we might have.
Get a book.
This is twenty twenty-three, this is kind of.
Yeah, it's not a lot of difference between twenty-three and twenty-four.
We did have.
What our balance is, that's mostly what I'm looking at.
Yeah, well, yeah.
But I did, I did go to the select board and tell them that we had to get more for this coming year because we were going to do the. I thought so.
It says we have seven thousand or this was twenty twenty-three on hand.
I'll get a new.
Oh, so are we just like, our budget rolls over and we don't use it? It just kinda?
Yeah, the budget rolls over.
Yeah.
We've not really set.
I think we've got that.
How much is?
Seven thousand in there.
How much would our match be?
No, about two thousand, a little less than two thousand.
So we could totally have a great party then.
Gourmet cookies.
We're getting the Costco stuff now.
It is, yeah. So, yeah, it says we have seven thou- or we had seven thousand at the end of last, into twenty twenty-three.
So I think that this is a good straw man to consider appropriate for both the grant and the match. And it also seems to describe the things that we would have. And you can see everybody, number eight is really the big work and that's five two-hour planning commission meetings. And I think we talked about it at the last meeting or maybe the meeting before, that we would probably have these as separate meetings because we couldn't guarantee that a meeting like this could give us two hours on top of the hearings that we have.
Um, also, the public outreach, um, I guess, are there any specific stakeholders that you think should be involved in the town plan updating process? Like, now that we've.
Conservation.
Yeah, the Conservation Commission. There's, is there anything else that comes to mind in terms of people?
Yeah, she's Historic Society and Alice. Conservation Commission is.
She was meeting with us on behalf of the Conservation Commission, but she's also on Historic Society.
Right, so Conservation, Historic Society.
Zoning administrator maybe or?
Yeah.
Yes.
And the, uh, select board, obviously, but, um, I think anybody that lives in the village district really should, but anybody that lives in this town, it would be nice to somehow get something out to them. I just don't know what works the best. I, I wonder if a mailing to everybody would be so cost prohibitive, but something that would catch their eye rather than just stack up on the table. I don't know if that.
Well, I think putting it on that town website that we have, the town prior, and then people share it in the multiple Bakersfield, um, online.
Those are free, aren't they?
They are free.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about some sort of. Yeah, I think the one that I think is growing is Front Porch Forum. Front Porch Forum seems to be read by more people these days than a lot of. I don't know if it would be for free, but it's modest. I think if we were to have that in like every month that we meet.
Yeah.
To, to make sure people understand that we have a meeting about the town plan, that they're glad, we're glad to have them join us.
Cause setting out the notice, people are just gonna throw them away, you know. I know I would. I'm terrible with that. Like, don't, don't send me anything in the mail. I'll toss it. You know, um.
Yeah, I agree.
Don't tell that to my IRS man, but.
Right.
Everything's electronic now, right? So, yeah. And we could also, um, to create like a poster board, a nice poster board, um, you know. I can, yeah, I'll do that. I'd love to do that. I was actually looking on putting a, a nicer like plywood board like on the corner there and then people could put, you know, updates like this on there, but it's only for town. It wouldn't be for like garage sales or anything like that, but for, or you know, a way that people could see, like, here it is, you know.
Uh-huh.
How many people come here to town hall during the day? So busy?
Can be quite busy.
Yeah, I mean, putting it right on the front porch here would probably be the best place cuz it's out of the rain and people come in here.
I know, I was trying to think of something we could put on the corner there.
If you can think of something, that's a freebie. If you can think of something, that's a freebie, we'll do it ourselves. We're gonna pay them.
Yeah.
There's any.
Water free.
There's any like big town events sort of in the coming year that would be.
So we have a Fourth of July, which would be a good time for us maybe to set up that plaque, that poster in a prominent site and maybe take ideas at a table.
We could even have a booth set up at the Fourth of July.
Yeah, you better, you better give away food.
Yes.
People.
Oh no, then we'd be chased down by the church and the historical society if we're giving away food.
As long as it's not what they're doing though, they should be fine.
That's right. We'll do cotton candy.
Oh boy, you would be one hot booth.
Cotton candy and icee, icies, not creamies, icies. A nice July day, that'll bring in some people.
Okay, um, well, yeah, I think this is a good starting point for a grant application. And I think the last thing she wanted to confirm was that you guys want NRPC as the.
Yes.
Going out to the.
We, we did it with you folks before, and frankly, the mapping is the, in my opinion, the most important reason. If we had somebody else, they're gonna get the maps from you probably, so. And also being from NRPC, the representative for the town, I feel like I hear from every town that invests in NRPC for plan revision or bylaw revision. They, they get good value for the planners.
Yeah, well, I mean, a lot of it's.
Does it, does everybody agree with that, or?
Yes, definitely.
I don't wanna be speaking for everybody.
That was a major help last time, having Taylor there, Taylor Newman.
The maps you're speaking of are the zoning maps?
Um, usually in the town plan, there's all sorts of maps. There's a lot about natural resources and, yeah, so that all got.
Critical areas, septic, suitability, when, all the energy maps are in here. And those are important because they, and I think that that's another area of interest is just to make sure that we provide for energy planning, but also where we prefer energy projects not go with, say, historic districts or view sheds of particular interest to the community. All right. Everybody feel good about?
Yeah, yeah.
And you don't need anything on the budget?
Uh, no, as long as that looks good to you guys.
I think everybody was comfortable with it, Heather?
Yep.
Good.
Do you need, do you have questions for him, Heather, about the development board?
I do, yeah.
Because he would be right here.
Did you hear her discussion?
Yeah, I did hear some of that. So, so basically you guys are looking to have a development review board instead of a.
No, so I think what we would likely do is in the revision of the town plan, we should discuss whether a design review board would be better than a planning commission, because.
Now, you have to always have a planning commission. You have to, that's a bylaw. You have to have a planning commission. The development review board would replace the zoning board of adjustment.
Okay.
So all the quasi judicial decisions would go with the development review board, and the planning commission would just exist for doing what it's doing now, the town bylaws and the town plan. And, yeah, and it, the two go hand in hand, so it actually suggests on the state side that planning commission members be on the development review board or on the zoning board of administrative. Right now, it splits the quasi judicial role. Two of it goes to us on the zoning board of adjustment, which is the variances and the conditional use. And the planning commission gets the other two options of the subdivision, and I'm not sure the other one. And it just doesn't make any sense to have two separate boards having to know the quasi judicial roles for each one of those. And it would make sense to go to a lot of the towns, specifically the smaller towns, I've noticed are going to a development review board just because it makes more sense to kind of hold, you know, all the quasi judicial, judicial learning into one board. And we just have a hard time getting anybody on these boards. And the reason why I would really think it would be great for the planning commission people to be on that same board is just because we make the laws and then we require a whole nother department to know what we were assuming was about, like this height restriction case that came up with the, the applicants wanting to build or having to build a house at forty-four, forty, was it forty-four feet above the land level, you know, and which it was like nine feet above what we currently allow, which is thirty-five feet. And, and just not knowing there is that conditional use in there that says we will allow for conditional use, but it didn't real, it just kind of left it wide open. And so the, it would be helpful to have more voices from the planning commission on that review board so that we can say, oh yes, this is what we intended this to mean versus just having somebody that's like, all right, nobody would else would volunteer, so we just got this person, which is how the development review board exists, I'm sorry, how the ZBA board has existed for the last ten years, is people that don't really know the purpose of the, the bylaws that were created. Probably should, while we here, just mentioned that we should get rid of that conditional use on the height restriction, because I just think that should not be allowed at all. So just getting that.
That's a bylaw, I think, as opposed to the town plan.
Yes.
The bylaws would have to come later. We're, we're working on the one thing first.
Right, I know that the lawyer said that the planning commission can meet and change the town bylaws when an issue comes up like this, and then it just has to get approved by the select board.
Yeah. If, if you want to do a bylaw amendment, then that's something the planning commission can propose, but you have to do a warrant public hearing at a planning commission meeting, and then when it goes to the select board, that hearing has to be warrant, warranted too. That's thirty days notice before each of the hearings. So that is a process that you can do, there's just some sort of scheduling, but.
Cause, thank you for that, Luke. Here's the situation we ran into is we only have a thirty-five foot ladder for our fire trucks, as you, as, as you probably know, William. Or Bill, sorry, that you probably know that, we can't really sustain these houses, and from what Matt was saying, that when you get X, Y, Z, which was three, he, they decided it, once you get to three houses above the thirty-five foot limit, then we're, we could be required to purchase that one million dollar new fire truck. And so to, to prevent any confusion or any possibility, it would be probably in the best interest of the town to remove the conditional use for the height of buildings. That way, we don't get into the mess we're in now, where we're now kind of, you know, having to make decisions for applicant, the applicant that's in there now. I'm trying to think of how to say this really. You know, I'm trying to think of how to say this, and it would protect the town.
We can discuss the DRB versus ZBA when we're doing, doing the town, town plan.
Yeah, um, yeah, I will say that a lot of towns have a planning commission and a DRB that are sort of separate entities, but they have all the same membership, so. All the.
Yes.
So DRB and vice versa, and sometimes what they'll do is they'll just meet twice a month instead of once a month, and then alternate whether it's a planning commission meeting or a DRB meeting. So that's something I know that a few towns do, but yeah, I think that would probably help address some of the concerns by having the same membership on both of those boards.
Well, we will definitely consider that and the idea of a bylaw amendment, but I think if we're gonna talk about a bylaw amendment, we'd have to warn that as a topic of discussion, not.
Definitely, yeah, if we're gonna make a decision on it, yeah. You would have to.
Well, you can sort of put it on your agenda and discuss and sort of write a draft, and then we can look that over. If you want, and then once you have the draft together, you can present a public hearing.
Yeah, it's just, I think that once people open up the bylaws, they might wanna do more than just change the conditional use permit.
Fixed area allocation.
The only reason why that one is really hot topic is just because we were, people are saying that multiple houses have already been allowed to be built at that height, so we're already over that restriction. And so this would kind of like wash any more consideration. Where, not only that, some people inadvertently think they see conditional use, they think that they're gonna be able to get it, so they build ahead and then come back and say, hey, we had to build our house this way because of X, Y, Z, can you grant us this conditional use? Well, if it doesn't exist, then there's not gonna be that hope there. So it might have avoided some issues that we're running into, and just because we just don't have the equipment, and I don't know if you guys can afford one million dollar fire truck, I know I can't.
Oh, we, we, we gave up on asking you, so, no, we, we understand. It's just we wanna get to the business of tonight.
Yeah. So that's it for me regarding that, so if you guys wanna move on, that's fine. Thank you.
All right, so.
You're good?
Thank you so much for coming.
Yeah.
And for your help, and it sounds like we're all set. We're waiting for your next steps with the select board and then with the municipal planning grant application to the state.
Yeah, yes, I think that will be.
Great. Well, thanks for coming out and safe travels home.
Do you bring that to the select board?
Yeah, we will forward that to them.
Okay.
The resolution that you guys signed.
On the tenth?
Yes, yeah, I think so, or I think it might be the one after that, because.
The twenty-fourth. Okay. If you want, just let me know, I'll add you to the agenda.
Okay, yeah.
You can send an email to thetownofbakersfield@gmail.com. No, I'll get it.
And Christian, thanks for your patience. Come on up.
Sounds good.
All righty.
Drive careful. Winter Wonderland out there.
Who do we wanna talk about first, Mr.?
So first of all, I, I would, I'd like to know what your purpose is tonight, specifically. Yeah.
Is this a preliminary, a final, or what are you hoping it to be?
I mean, what makes sense to me, because this isn't a warned meaning, it, it's not technically a.
Right, I was thinking.
Sketch review, then I come back whenever we can schedule for the final.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
At least I asked him to come in and said, I know you guys are probably working on all kinds of stuff, but this weather breaks. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And, and these three subdivisions came in, and if you guys can call tonight the sketch plan and then rock them up, you know, I can get the, I can get the mailings done out, so probably Wednesday. You know, so that you, you tell me when they, when you get home the final. They're relatively easy subdivisions. Gabe's is basically saving the maple sugar ones on the far end. They keep it in agricultural.
Separating enough, separating it officially from the.
They're officially separate, just in case later on, the boys and type sell the wiring, don't they, the one we have, they're the. People still have a shoveling operation. The Granger Heinlein is a simple fix, they're now addition, he's too, he's sugar wood. Basically, that's working right now.
Where's that, where's that one?
Yeah, so that's the Granger's property where he lives. He bought the property to the north of that, that was for sale on Witchcat Road, eight forty Witchcat Road.
Okay.
So his intent is to divide the old house off, fix him that up, maybe sells it off, keeps it, he hasn't really decided yet.
Still that one's.
Everything remaining behind that is the sugar bush that he sugars with his current operation, so he's looking to keep that less impacted.
So part of this is in Ennisburg and part of this is in Bakersfield.
That's the game jar.
Okay, we're back looking at the chips.
I was just handed this, that's all.
Yeah.
I'm a trained animal.
I think that's a Ennisburg.
This is the Granger one.
Okay.
Like sixty-seven acres.
For Gabe.
He says, he said, you know, my brother's getting older, he might not want the environment. I said, hey, you know, he's only a year older than I am.
Yeah, we're all getting older.
So would you wanna look at a drawing here?
That date.
So we'll, we'll start with, it sounds like everybody wants to start with the Granger Heinlein.
Yes. Pretty simple, we lost something in one, two, seven acres, I think. All interior, not put in any exterior of the existing carpal. Area designated for the state for backup, and it's just the existing house that's at eight forty Witchcat Road. And we're doing this under the fixed area allocation because of, obviously, the zoning requirements regarding it. So we will need to, you know, adhere to those deed restriction requirements in your guys' bylaws.
Is he having a new wastewater permit for that?
So I, I am working on submitting that. I haven't submitted it quite yet, but that is the area that I have designated as part of the state requirement. Typically try and do town and state stuff all at the same time, because they usually face something on, like you guys through meetings at the same phone.
And this is the existing house that's there?
Yes, and the, the rest of the property is vacant woods, sugar bush. He's talked to a forester for their forest plan. He's gonna clear some stuff out so he can sugar it.
So in the bylaws, there's a table that has all of the required elements of the drawings for a final. And Mr. Jarvis is quite familiar with them and has almost always had very good record of incorporating all of the elements of the requirements in that table on the final. Yep, I just found it, and we obviously really stand by this. So we hope that you have all of the things that are described here, you know? Over the years, we've seen Jarvis as surveyors put everything on paper. Jarvis as surveyors put everything on paper. And just a reminder that if you want to have a final approval at our next meeting, for example. Just to go through that table seven point one and verify everything's in there. The, some things that sometimes pop out are, missing are existing features. There's a long list of existing features. From streams, ponds, floodplain, river corridors, wetlands, agricultural soils, structures, foundations, old cellar holes, wells. So, you know, that's, it's a long list, and those are the kinds of things that around here, you kinda have to walk the property to really get a good look at it. And then also the utilities, just to make sure that they're all indicated. You know, electric and water and.
Is cord distance road frontage, or what is, I don't see the road frontage actually on there.
It's up in the top box.
I see, I do, yeah, yeah.
Because the road is on a slight curve.
Okay.
That arc light would be the frontage.
That's the frontage, okay.
Yes.
That's, that's kinda common knowledge when you see a survey that that's measuring the front, road frontage.
Yes.
That's just, what is that, two seven?
Two seventy-five plus.
Yeah, that's what's required.
Requirement is two seventy-five, we're able to meet that frontage requirement, the only thing we're doing for the fixed area allocation, the reduction of the actual acreage. And that is to, again, keep the house lot as part of a house lot, and then keep the sugar bush with the sugar bush.
And so. The other is the unique. Requirements of the fixed area allocation.
Deed restriction.
Right, and you mentioned that.
Yep.
And then.
I've informed him with that, he's aware of those requirements.
And that is Article seven point five, which is on page sixty-two. And.
We did this recently, a year or so ago, with the property down the road here on One Owee, neighboring Rock Allen.
Mm-hmm. Wasn't it his son?
What's that?
I thought it was his son that was getting the property.
Yeah, his mother's, his mother's house or something, maybe.
Yep, so you meet the two acres.
Yep.
Min, less than two acres.
Two.
And it still keeps it at the size that's needed for the district, which is a conservation district. And then you mentioned the deed restriction.
So that's actually.
Follow-up at that with, with his attorney.
Twenty years of.
That's actually rural, this project.
Oh, it's rural, okay. So, you know, I don't, I don't know how you guys feel, but it seems like it makes the, meets the requirements of a sketch plan. No, no.
It's just that it wasn't warned.
Right, and then hopefully, if you follow what we just described here about the. Needs of that table seven point one and everything in Article seven point five. You should be pretty good shape for a final. Lot and plan review when you come next time.
Preliminary slash final, because the sketch, sketch review wasn't warned at all, and.
Is that a need to be?
The butters are supposed to be notified, maybe not by certified mail, but it says written notification to applicant to owners of all properties adjoining the property.
Where are you reading?
On page nine, public notice for site plan review, preliminary subdivision review and sketch subdivision. They'll be given not less than seven days prior to the date of the public hearing. And shall a minimum posted in three places and written notification to the applicant to owners of all properties adjoining the property. So to just warn it as a final with no.
Preliminary, yeah.
Preliminary or sketch review warning, I think we're skipping something. But we, I think we could probably warn it as a primary slash final, depending on.
Be preliminary.
Preliminary. Not way.
Document missing, you're covering.
Yeah, or if somebody comes and we can't do it in one hearing.
Right.
We'll warn a final. Everybody will be notified.
Most of these, most of these lands, people have lived around them for.
Right.
Thirty years.
Right.
If you guys make a decision to approve, technically, there's still an appeal period after that.
It's just somebody has to be here for needing to be able to appeal.
But yeah, they have, they have to bring you to the Potter, and they have to have the interest party and swear in at the Potter. If anybody shows up, we'll deal with that.
Did you get any drawings?
I got that, that one, yeah.
Yeah, you want me to put it back in the package?
Because it's still gotta go to you.
I think that's the only big one. Well, actually, there are two big ones.
And that, what I have brought, you guys, for the customer, and take a look at it. I can run it through the.
This is the Richards one now?
So you guys pronounce it Paradise?
Paradise.
Paradise, I thought somebody said Paradise earlier, I wasn't sure if it was Paradise.
It's a last name.
Paradise, okay, I've always, I used to know of Paradis, but I guess you guys say it different, so. So. Different, different pronunciation, okay. So this is at the end of Paradis Lane, the very end towards the Brook. He's looking to do two lots, one in the front and then one in the back, accessible via right-of-way. He's a, out of state or feller, and he was looking to build, had this property for a while, and he's looking to build on it.
So how big are the lots?
I don't have it memorized.
Yeah.
I wanna say one was seven something.
Yep, seven point five and three point four.
Thank you, ma'am.
Seven point five and three point four, and that's.
Each single-family residences. And shared infrastructure would be the shared drive, and there's an easement provided over that block. Sorry.
You wanted you.
What is, what's the district there?
Um, this is High Blasting Avenue.
A lot of development going on right now, we're on that Paradise lane.
Yeah, there is.
Uh, but they'd be the end of it, they're the.
The residue of the property, isn't it?
That's.
The last bit of property.
This is the very end of that lane, yeah, that's where, the cul-de-sac is where they have their access. Uh, the cul-de-sac is in, I know it doesn't look like it because of the old, old film photos, they don't have it updated yet. But this drive and the cul-de-sac is in.
Yep.
Um, there is this other piece over here, I don't know if anything's ever gonna happen there.
Yeah, that was just recently.
This one's listed for sale, and this one's built, and I think they built one of the.
And they both built.
Yeah.
They both built.
Yeah, so, everything's going on up there, and this is the last one, or we had, I will close it, but nothing though.
Yep.
And we have done very extensive wetland delineation in the review, because, I mean, look at it. And we, we have crossed all those Ps and Is on that, getting the state to approve what areas we can and can't impact, and that's been determined as well.
So, this is the house proposed?
Yes.
And.
Another one.
Yes.
Then there'd be like a driveway?
Yeah, so this, uh, kinda golden brown, that's the proposed driveway, so it comes in along this easement over the lot four. To access this lot five, and then we do have a pull-off area as required by your guys' regulations as well on that lot five, because of the length of the driveway. Just to go to that last lot on lot five.
And have you talked to the fire department about turnaround down there?
I haven't spoken with the fire department specifically, we just added the, the pull-off as required, there is a cul-de-sac at the end of the road.
Yeah, there's a long distance to run hose for, so you don't wanna fight a fire here, you'd wanna.
Why would they fight a fire at the cul-de-sac?
No, here.
Because that's the, sometimes that's the only place that's big enough to turn around, that's why. But you're required to ensure that this meets the intentions of the fire department.
Over how many?
No, any lot, yeah, because they fight fires at every lot. So, the best thing to do would be Tuesday nights, they meet, and you can schedule a time with the chief, I can give you his name.
Okay.
Chief Matt Hull, H-U-L-L.
I remember he was that person, here.
Okay, and so, talk to him about taking a look at what you've got planned there. So that the idea is that you get multiple fire trucks in there, because one runs out of water, and then you have to bring others in to give more water. And they have to be able to turn around and get out, so that's. They could, but that might be also pretty difficult, and I, I'm not sure about that.
One property burned, because there wasn't enough water.
Well, I, I can, I can say, he's my chief, and he gets upset if we don't request that you visit him. And the work that they do is extremely important in this town. So we honor his request.
I, I agree, we should definitely contact him and see what his thoughts are.
And then, you guys see anything that looks like a challenge to? Yeah, you'd have your utilities. One of the other things that the other drawing had for Heinlein, Granger was, Granger Heinlein was the contour lines, this map doesn't have any contour lines.
It's a bit zoomed out, um, definitely add some.
They're required, it's not.
Yep.
So again, that's why I mentioned the table seven point one, is that.
There's not a lot of grade change, but you can answer.
Well, you'd, you'd be surprised that as it goes up the hill here, it gets pretty steep. And it's important for the drawings to represent what's there for people for generations, not just.
It's in the property, yeah.
It's being subdivided.
So the big, the big law has, has been surveyed?
It's in the property, yeah, so it's been pretty much determined.
Yeah.
This is the survey plan.
This is the new.
At the end of it, it won't have like stamp approval.
Right, right, no, I'm just saying like this original law has, has that been surveyed from years past, or when they?
You mean before subdivision?
All over here. At the end of the day, it'll be done, I, as far as if it was previously already determined, or will be determined, then I don't.
And. Hundred and twenty-five foot of frontage, and that's on this road?
It's accessed via right-of-way, that back lot is, and then this lot is accessed via the cul-de-sac. Which is also right-of-way. The new one doesn't have any actual road furniture, there's no road to the right way.
Well, there's this tiny little pe, oh no, this property stops here, is that right?
Yeah, the red line is the proposal.
Oh, okay, okay.
So the red is the only thing, the only boundary we're proposing.
So it is all right-of-way for access here.
Yeah, well, there's in the village, or we.
Yep. Yeah, I just worry, I just worry about the water down there. Thank you. And then the last one is this one, the Jarvis Family Farm, and there's two drawings of this. And I'll try to keep this together, here's one for you to look at. Heather, I'm sorry, we can't really show you all this. But this is a subdivision. And you were describing the sugar woods being separated from the farm.
Different. Those maps are both different, they're both different pieces.
One is, one is, excuse me, one is behind the fire, if you're going north on the Boston Bowl Field. One is the, the higher woods out behind the barn coming around, uh, goes through the Ennisburg hill line. And then comes back out towards the Boston Bowl Field, and then the other one is, if you turn on the Witchcat Falls Road. Kinda confusing, because I was in the four-part table, uh, you turn on the Witchcat Falls Road, and there, where the sugar house is.
Yeah.
Goes from there, up around behind what used to be my brother's, well, it's my brother's house. And then down towards, uh, where the little development is on the right of Boston Bowl Field.
They're not, they are contiguous, or they're?
No, it's Boston Bowl Field cuts through.
But he wants them, there're gonna be two separate, there're gonna be two separate lots.
Yeah.
And you can't show them all on one drawing?
It'd be, someone's doing doubt, it would be hard to tell, very much confusing if you do it all on.
If you look up in a corner, you can sort of see.
Yeah, I can see, it, it really doesn't, doesn't really touch much.
So he's. He wants them to be two separate lots.
Yeah.
Lot two and lot, lot two is.
This is lot one.
All right, this one also over here says lot two on it, and this one says lot two. He wants them to be called one, one piece, or?
No, no, it's, it's gonna be two separate subdivisions.
That should have a different lot number, I guess, it sounds like.
One and two is just typical.
Well, lot one is pointing to the farm, the farm land still, and lot two is, I think what Gabe wants is this piece right here.
Yep.
This one over here says lot two.
So these are like two separate subdivisions.
They all have two separate subdivisions.
This is all one, this is all another.
Divided by the row, so they're two.
Two is to be given, this to, to Gabe, and this remains in the Jarvis.
Yes, this will remain, this is where the farm is currently, and then the horse, this way is where they're building two barns and. Uh, and then this is all that big cornfield and.
The lot one on that one is probably being hanged, and lot two is broken off.
Lot, I believe you're gonna.
Eight, getting lot two wheels for both plants.
Yeah, it's gotta, surrounds the barns and stuff.
The lot two would be the, one for Gabe, and lot two here is the one for Gabe's.
So these really need to be two separate proj, yeah, they shouldn't be considered the same project. And then.
Agricultural, so no septic or anything needed.
No.
Yeah, there's a lot more needed. Seems. Are these just like totally this, uh, it's hard to differentiate between the two Jarvis Farm. Project one and project two or something?
They're dated differently.
Okay, so, the date is May twenty-four. So May twenty-third.
They also have different project numbers.
Gabe surveyed them himself, or?
Gabe has done some of the survey work, yes. Believe we helped on it.
The same one, the same one got involved?
Brotherly love. Yeah, I think he asked us to do the whole thing, but we told him we didn't have the time. Yeah, I think he asked us to do the whole thing, but we told him we didn't have time.
Yeah, so, both of them are missing some features of the drawings that are required. Specifically, you know, what zoning they are, what frontage they have, et cetera. I'm, I'm sure they are all fine with regard to that, but they have to be on the drawing. So it's like on your other, um, project, there's a definition of the zoning district. The frontage, lot size, the. It's a little table. No, I understand the project is described, but it doesn't say anywhere that I can see what zoning district it is. And I don't see any specification of what the road frontage is.
I'm not sure that one is actually on.
Down, look where the Sugar House is.
Yep, that's this one, I think, here's the Sugar House, and there's.
Which one have you got over there?
We've got the one on Ba- Boston Post.
Okay, this one is.
It's up in the corner.
Here, someone that crosses Ennisburg.
Okay, this is the Ennisburg one, you got the map upside down for me, so.
Right, well, we're trying to read them, um, yeah.
His road front.
So this on Woods Road here, I guess, which.
Yeah, he's got a couple different, on this one here, now that I don't know which one I'm looking at. Uh, he's got one that comes off of Chimney Road.
Yeah, I'll tell you about your pen there.
Right here, Chimney Road, uh, which is on the Ennisburg end, and there's gonna be one that comes through. Where's the trailer park, right here.
And then.
And he's also gonna, on the other maps that he's doing. He was gonna try and put another right away in somewhere else over. But he's gonna have six of those little maps for you. With the lines and everything, the contour lines and everything. You know, on this, you've got the one of some Witch Cat Falls, right?
Yeah.
Off of Boston Post.
She's already got the Sugar House and all I've built in, this is where the Sugar House is. And then on the end of Kelly and Sharon's law. Which is this law here, I believe, does that say Westman law? Yeah, sharing Westman, he has a right of way here, and he didn't say it. But I also know that because Kelly was my brother, there's a right of way that goes right in through here, and there's a right of way that goes right in through here. Because this was one of those small lots that happened years ago. What do you have as frontage here?
Yeah, any right of ways should be demarked on here, because we're not just trying to protect these people, we're trying to protect people a hundred years from now.
Tell, there's two right of ways on the lot two property, that's ninety-eight point seven five acres, one off of Chimney Road and one off of Boston Post Road. Each made fifty feet.
Yeah, that's still not two hundred and seventy-five. Right, and the frontage requirement, two hundred and seventy-five feet?
I said right of way.
Oh, yeah, with the frontage requirement.
I think you'll find that if you look.
Two hundred ninety, two hundred eighty-six or two hundred eighty-six on, uh, Chimney Road.
In Ennisburg?
Yeah.
Do you guys rule over Ennisburg?
We do not, but we do rule over Bakersfield, so.
The land in Bakersfield is accessed via right of way.
Right. So it doesn't need to meet the road frontage requirements?
That's what access via right of way handles, and for those times when lots aren't on the road, I promise.
And that is this feature here off of Boston Post Road? That's.
There is, there is one off of Boston Post Road that also indicates a easement going over the sap lines. And then there's also a fifty footer coming off of Chimney Road, which protrudes from Ennisburg to the subject property in Bakersfield. So that way, the property, we can't land lock the property, not legally for us to do.
Right.
Yeah, I guess that, I don't see that. Where, where did you say the other right of way was? Off the chimney in E- Ennisburg, and the other one's off the Boston Post Road and. Also in Ennisburg, so there's no access in Bakersfield, sounds like.
It would have a legal easement access once recorded with a D for that property. Baker side of lot two, the Sugar Bush.
Have, would have a right of way on there by then?
It would have to, you, you wouldn't be able to give it away legally, because then you'd land lock the property.
So you're gonna add that on?
Add one on.
The Baker Sealed access, right of way?
It's, it's, it is indicated on the file, there's, yeah.
I guess we're just asking, can you show it to us?
Absolutely, yeah, I thought Ryan would say.
Well, the only two left, right of way there in Ennisburg is what we said.
No, yeah, so they, they start in Ennisburg, because that's where the road ends, and then there's a fifty foot right of way here. In favor of this lot, lot two, that goes along this line to, till it gets to the Baker Sealed border and box of your property. There is also another way to get up through there, through the woods trail off of Boston Post Road, as indicated by fifty foot wide easement over there. To get up into the woods, which this part of it is in Ennisburg, but then they can't go. You enter through the woods, use the wood trail and get to the other one.
Is there any proposal for housing in this?
My understanding is in the Sugar Bush, that's what Gabe does, is the Sugar's.
My uncle is.
Okay, well, I think we've seen. Enough and shared enough of our perspectives that you can. Should know what we expect when you come back. Next month. And then our next meeting is scheduled for.
Be the night before town meeting.
All right.
You ready for now?
It'll be a month, it's usually the first Monday of the month.
And I, I, I won't be here, but that doesn't mean you can't meet without me.
This room will probably be set up by then for town meeting, so it might be better to. Yeah.
Put it after the town meeting, because.
Third week maybe, or?
What about the tenth?
Tenth was select for, yeah.
Seventeenth, I'll be. Out of town too. Right, well, we could meet in another room on the tenth.
But you got Nikki on both boards.
Well, then you can just meet without me on the third. That's all, I'm fine.
Well, the third isn't really good, because it's the ninety-four town meeting.
Okay, so then, that'd be fine too.
That's, um, at least that would clear out the.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So you want to do all three of those again on the seventeenth or?
About two, so we're shooting for seventeen, there's so many numbers going around. If you have anything else, let me know, Ryan.
Yeah, but I'm sure the ladies will let me know.
It helps to have your right email now, the email they have on mine. I'm sure there's a lot of good people. All right.
So, we have. I guess we should wait. Tammy comes back, are you okay with the seventeenth?
I am okay with the seventeenth, thank you for asking.
Cause I probably need you here. Although.
Yeah, because.
Might be for. Yeah.
Tammy's running past this one, so that would be after the select or, or the fifth, so she would be off the committee by then. Potentially.
Is she getting off the planning commission, is that still her plan or?
She's not running.
Right.
Tammy?
Yeah.
This is the last?
I think so, well.
I forgot about that.
Do we have anyone else that's running? Do we have anyone else that's running, do you know Heather? To replace her?
No, I don't know of anybody that's running, I can try and drum up some business, you know, for somebody.
Good luck, yeah. High paying, high paying position, so we shouldn't have any trouble.
And we don't even get cookies or anything when we come to the meetings, and then people get angry at us. And we can't even drown our straws in milk and cookies, so.
Be great to forget Linda McCall to get on here. You know her?
Yeah. I don't know her well, I wouldn't say, but yeah, maybe, is she interested?
Well, she's had some time here.
Occasionally, for sure.
And then, also. Town rep for, with West Regional Planning Commission. And, uh. Yep.
A short walk for her.
Yep.
Do you want me to reach out to her, because she should probably get her, um, if. Is it quick enough, yeah, she could still get the votes.
Yeah, if you want to reach out to her, that'd be great.
Okay.
You can still get on the ballot at this late hour?
Probably not, seems pretty late, I think they've already.
Yeah, I think you have to be in January twenty something or other, so.
I know, I just had my, I just.
Yeah, select board could appoint her if she's interested.
Yes.
Tammy might have some more, no, no more.
Cause I think I just barely got the votes done, or whoever, how many I need to be on the ballot. So, yeah, I think you're right, I think, Tammy, does the ballot? If we're to find somebody else to run for planning commission, is it too late to get them on the ballot?
It is.
You're done, Tammy, is that right?
You could appoint somebody.
Right, Tammy Brennan, you can appoint Tammy Brennan, right?
Or you could put, you could. You could put a sign up for her out on the, you know, wherever we're allowed to be.
Writing candidate, Tammy Brennan?
Yeah, yep, Tammy.
Write in, write in Tammy.
But the warning's already out there, so.
Yeah, we'll probably have to rely on an appointment, maybe we can talk to somebody between now and March seventeenth.
I mean, technically you can have like up to seven, so even if Linda.
I just like to get a replacement for the fifth, I'm not gonna worry about the sixth and seventh.
No, I mean, like, we could get Linda, um, now, and then as, uh, Tammy's transitioning out, we'll have.
There's, there's only a few weeks till town meeting.
Yeah, we won't be meeting again before town meeting, so.
Okay, so let's, um, let's move on, is there minutes for us to review?
Number second, minutes, September second. That's what it says on the agenda.
So I think that there's no minutes, because our secretary is not here.
Leave all this on your desk.
Brian, give me a call when you get home and I'll catch you up on the, I'll, I'll catch you up on what happened in the meeting the other day.
Hopefully we got power back, power was off in Ennisburg. It went, I went out right before I left, so. No, your house was dark when I went by, so.
Oh no.
I didn't see it light till I got to Jolly.
All right, so.
Hey, Ryan.
Since the public's leaving, I don't think there's any public comment. And, uh, we've, no minutes, and then we schedule the next meeting for March seventeenth at seven. And will you warn that as one of your last duties?
I don't mind warning them.
Are you gonna be available to come into that one, you think, or?
It's a possibility, it's not a really good time. I'm running a. An exercise with, like, a thousand people. In Michigan, and we probably will run late every night.
Yeah, just like there's gonna be a lot of stuff to vote on that night, it sounds like.
No, I agree, I am. Sorry. Um, that's why I was saying, you know, another night, the tenth would work for me, but.
Well, why won't the tenth work for, oh, cause it's.
Right, well, it's a matter of who you want to vote. Nikki or me, so.
It seems like those, you know, they're Jarvis projects, and they're usually all pretty. Yeah, pretty tight.
I agree.
What about the eleven, because we don't have to meet on a Monday, we can meet on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
It could be any day of the week of the tenth, although, if, if that was something you wanted to consider.
Tuesday would work for me, the eleventh.
I, I have fire department on Tuesdays.
Uh, the twelfth? I'm good every day, so you tell me what days you guys are ready, and then.
I'm pretty flexible, yeah. Well, yeah, the twelfth, Wednesday night, would that have to be especially warned or?
I, I, I think the only day I could do it would be the thirteenth.
Okay, let's do the thirteenth, it, um, and, um, everybody should be back from England by then, so.
I hope so, since that's five weeks.
We'll have to tell Christian, because he's, he wrote down the seventeenth, so.
It's four days earlier, so, it's not like, it's two weeks earlier, but we do need to reach out to him, are you planning to reach out to him?
I can, I can, and we'll have to let.
Probably have to send them notice of the meeting, right?
They all have to be sent to notice, notice of the meeting, certified notice.
So the Jarvis is, okay, so that would take care of it too. All right, so next meeting is March thirteenth, seven o'clock here, and. Is there any other business I? Not, if not, I could entertain a. Last motion?
I move, we adjourn this meeting.
All right, so we have a motion to adjourn at. Eight fifty-four P M. This is one of our longest meetings in a long time.
All right, so moved, sir.
All right, so all in favor say aye.
Aye, Heather, do it.
Four to zero.
See you guys.
Bye.
Take care.
Bye, thank you, take care.